Okay, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Very first thing that we need to do is we need a motion to let Trustee O'Reilly attend electronically since she wasn't able to attend in person tonight. Would somebody like to make a motion? Okay, moved by Trustee Tanucci, seconded by Trustee Michio. Roll call please.
Trustee Barowski. Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Oh, I did it. Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
And Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Okay, welcome to the meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, what's wrong? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. All right, welcome everyone. We, I don't know if we, I don't think we have any homeowners associations here, but I'll ask the question anyway. Anyone here from Long Grove Woods? Lisa Anderson? White Oak Estates, anyone here? I don't see anyone.
That's my neighborhood.
Christina? Yeah, you're here, okay.
I'm here. That's my neighborhood. I'm not aware of any issues or questions, but I know there was a recent turnover.
Yeah, there's a new president. We found that out after the agenda was published. He was intending to, his intent was to attend tonight. An emergency came up. We received communication and asked could he be added for next, the next board meeting, so we said yes.
Okay. So, nothing to report, Michelle?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll now open it up for public comment. Any public comment? I take there's no public comment. Sergeant Ryan Ammer, do you have?
I do. I have a few things here that were reported recently. I have asthma on the breath, so this may be redundant for some reason. We have two burglaries that both appeared to probably have occurred Saturday night and two Saturday sometime, I would say, because one was reported early Sunday morning. One on Harden and one on Gethserd. Their sliding doors were smashed and the ring video caught three, what looks like three offenders leaving one of the homes with suitcases full of proceeds that they took from the home. So I can't very confidently say these are related to the golf course burglaries like we had last year and whatnot, because these are not on the golf course. So those are still being investigated. And Deputy Oaks has sent a report of some vandalism in the tunnel for Oak Hill Sub. And I guess there was a whole near Oak Hill Sub too that had some graffiti that was written, "Put some tools on the ground" or something. The tunnel will be kept an eye on again. Whoa, I refresh my memory, is this the same tunnel that was being?
Yes, yeah.
And the lights were fixed in there? So yeah, so if that happened here again, a little early to get to school and whatnot, but it's obviously a time to be at a point. So we definitely are aware to keep an eye on that and actually get a lot of color and a lot to do there from your own time from that people.
Any questions?
I'm working with Ryan and Sergeant Amber and Deputy Oaks to come up with some ideas on how we can communicate and do some crime prevention efforts in the various HOAs. So looking also, we're taking care of the graffiti over at the tunnel. And then we're.
It's already completed.
And we're exploring CCTV, potential CCTV options. Just again, just starting to look at those.
Well, I think the other thing, if it's true, right, there's these groups that are coming in and they're casing the houses, right?
Yeah, with the golf course one, that was similar. They were, I think, trying to target homes where they knew the people were going to be gone for a weekend time, Tuesday, Friday, maybe so between them.
Mm-hmm.
These, I haven't found any correlation between them.
Oh, okay.
It's still early, but countywide, McHenry County as well, vehicle thefts are on the rise again. And it's not like it was years ago where they were coming and taking high-end cars and, you know, the more affluent villages, they're taking any cars they can get their hands on now. So Greg and I spoke about community policing and all the same things I've been harping on for, you know, since 2015 when I took over down here. Need light on, cars unlocked. You know, but there's other things people don't think of, like when they're gonna go on vacation for spring break or with their families. These kids are putting it out on Facebook and Instagram, "I'm going wherever with my family." And sometimes then all of a sudden just break into that house with their friend and have a party or, you know, things like that. So a lot of little things go along the way as far as, and calling us to do extra patrol in your home when you're out of town.
Dial's watch, yeah.
Yeah.
Were most of the houses vacant? Like, were the people gone in the robbery?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the ones, the ones they were out of town, I don't have, the other people weren't home. I don't know if they were out of town yet. The residents were gone for the weekend. Didn't set their alarm and they had packages stacking up on the front porch. So that was another thing which reminded me of, if you guys go out of town, have a family member, friend, check on your house a few times. Pick up your mail, pick up your packages, newspapers in the driveway, all that stuff, because we're gonna keep going. I saw some ring video from these car stops that are going on somewhere just over in Diamond Lake, over around 683. And these cars are literally just rolling through the neighborhood at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. Five people are getting out, roaming the neighborhoods with flashlights, very concerned, and those trying to find a non-liberty car. You know, they're not looking for pocket change or something like that, because they wanna take the car. And that's what's happening. So a lot of prevention could, you know, afford that, so.
Anything else from anyone?
Had we painted the underpass with that?
Oh, the anti-graffiti paint?
Well, we took it down the layers and, and got rid of all the old graffiti, so. This is, this is supposed to be higher quality paint that they're using on the, on the repair.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, so, because the anti-graffiti stuff, it just, I had the impression it just kinda washes off.
No, this doesn't wash off. It has to be taken off. It may not be the same product.
Probably not.
What was, do you know what was painted this time around in there?
It's a crown with name or something.
I haven't seen it, so, you know, I.
Was it Burger King?
Didn't, 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 didn't recognize a whopper, but.
Okay.
So it was just a crown, nothing else?
It was a crown with a name underneath it.
Because last time it was on both walls and on a burglar.
Yeah, they got this one quick, and that's the key.
That's what they decided to do, is the one.
Soon as it goes up, take it down.
Get in there and get it out, because then when they bring the front back or whoever is gone, it's not as attractive, you know.
People tag on top of each other.
So it's already painted over?
Yep.
Today, yeah.
Oh, good, good. Yeah, so the lights are working on it, actually, often, you know, I don't know if you guys are out, put some kind of sign up there to call their bluff and say, "Warning, this property."
I think we have a sign up there.
My barrier sign.
Yeah, we put it up as a deterrent.
Yeah, but obviously not gonna everybody reason.
Or they spray a little brown.
Or they steal, or they steal the sign. Anything else?
I was just gonna ask, do we have any catalytic converters being stolen?
No, no. Well, actually, I think that back, that Land State. The Land State place did have a rational, that was maybe about a month or two ago. I think that was over off Long Grove Road.
McKinsey, I think, right?
Yeah, over by McKinsey.
Yeah.
Yeah, those have really declined recently, because they did catch a bunch of people responsible for a lot of those in the area. So they've kinda quieted down a little bit on those. They weren't really going to people's homes and taking a lot of cars in their driveways or whatnot. You know, Land State places or places fenced in, by the way.
Ryan's team and Greg have been great.
Yep. No, thank you.
Yeah, no, I just had you need something, I'll just give you a call and I'll.
Absolutely. It's great to see you in person, too.
Thank you.
We'll go on with your.
See you, Ryan.
See you, Ryan. All right, we're gonna move right along to Village Planner's Report, which I believe Village Manager Jackson's gonna get.
We, there is no report other than to make the board aware that there are two projects going before the Architectural Commission on the Monday, the 16th. One of them is the storage facility at Lake Cookin 53. And then the second will be the deck work being done at Joni's at 255 RPC. That's it.
Any questions? All right, we're gonna move right along then. We have the Village Engineers' Report. And that would be Village Engineer Perry. Want to give us an update?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so the Engineers' Report is in the board packet. There's two items that I wanna give a update on tonight. First one is number four, which is the 2022 Road Maintenance Program. As reported on the Engineers' Report, work is scheduled to start tomorrow. Confirm that with the contractor. And the work is going to start in Oak Grove Drive and on Oak Grove Circle. The Engineers' Report said the work is expected to be done by the end of June in Long Grove. The contractor is working to expedite that and is currently planning to get it done by the third week of June. So pleasant news from last week's pre-construction meeting with them. And the second item that I wanna give an update on is number six, which is the Horseman Replacement Project by Lake County on Three Lakes Drive and Robert Parker Coffin Road. Contractor requested from the county earlier today to start their prep work the week of May 23rd. So a week before what is in the Engineers' Report. And that work is going to be preparatory work, which is going to be installation of some erosion controls and some minor brush clearing. I talked with Manager Jackson earlier today and that work is going to be allowed to continue and proceed. However, no work and no impacts to the path or anywhere else along. Robert Parker Coffin Road's gonna be allowed until after the Memorial Day holiday, both for pedestrian safety over the Chocolate Fest and then also during the long three-day holiday weekend. So just wanted to report on that.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
When they, when they actually start working, will they be sensitive to the times of day, that, that there will be a slowdown in traffic?
Yes, yes. The contract documents had working hours, which, which didn't start until after 8:00, so, which is after the morning.
I'm more concerned at the end of the day.
And, yeah, and they'll be done by 3:00 on each day.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Other than that, there's just the standard updates that are on the Engineers' Report. I'll just go through real briefly. Temple Parking Lot, the major remaining item is the widening of the access at Old McHenry Road. Other than that, the project is pretty substantially complete. In response to the discussion at the last board meeting, I did lean on the contractor to get new wheel stops put in. So those, those will be coming. Robert Parker Coffin Road, the path itself, that project is, is complete. Then moving down, noted that the additional no right turn on red signs have been placed by the county at Old McHenry Road and Robert Parker Coffin.
Those are really good.
Yeah, the county did a good job on that, yeah.
Yeah.
So they were very, they were very quick to respond to that request, so I thanked them numerous times for that. I do not have an update on the community project funding. The application submitted to the Congressman's Office for the Lake Michigan Water Connection, I don't know if Greg wants to jump in, if he's heard anything.
I spoke to the Congressman's staff today and we're still waiting to hear. I do know that communities who have, are not being considered have informed me that they have already received rejection notifications that the projects, those projects were not being funded. We have not heard anything back yet, so I, I'm hopeful for that. And I'm waiting to have further discussion with the staff over at the Congressman's Office, so.
Excellent.
Not in this case. Not in this case.
Go ahead, Jeff.
And then the only other thing is the contractor did replace the dead oak trees on North Cruder Road. So I haven't been by to see what those look like, but.
They're pretty little, pretty little.
I was gonna say that they're, they're probably a little greener than the other ones, but small like the other ones.
How small is good, right, Jenny? Because then they find their forever home soon.
Yeah, it's just.
They'll cut off the big tree pretty quickly.
You think so? It's gonna take like 50 years, probably.
We know how that turns out.
I, I have a question that, that's probably more directed to Greg than to, to Jeff. And that is, at some point, can we have a total of what the Grove cost us?
Yeah, the Grove, the Burm.
Yes, yes. I can certainly put those numbers together.
Okay, just, just as a learning process, I, I think it would be good to know what, what we spent.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question also, and it's something you didn't address, but where are we? What's the next step on exploring village overhaul options?
We're, the, Jeff just sent me a memo today with some talking points, recommendations. We're gonna sit down with Kent, myself, Jeff, Trustee O'Reilly, and John Marshall, because he's offered his expertise. Probably I would say within the next week to talk about next steps.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Share, share your anxieties.
All right, if not, we're gonna keep moving if there's no more comments there. This is, the next item is to ratify the approval of Lake County Symphony Orchestra raffle application that was conducted on May 7th. This came in just after the board meeting, and I was asked to approve that per the authority that was given to me by the board so that they could go ahead with the raffle. All right, moved by Trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by Trustee Michio. Roll call?
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Michio.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
And Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. The next one is, we put back on the agenda the consideration approval of the community grant application for the Lake County Symphony Orchestra requesting $10,000. Do you wanna?
It, I received communication back from the, Josh? Are you, okay, you're Josh.
Yep.
Good to meet you. The, from Josh regarding our concerns that were expressed in the original recommendation. I don't know, there wasn't much change in, in the position, but it was certainly clearing up any questions we had as to why things were done and to some extent, next steps that were gonna be taken in moving the, that nonprofit forward. And what we had two meetings ago, there was a motion to reconsider the original vote to not offer funding for the symphony contingent on bringing it back and having discussion based on what Josh provided and any other information that came, came out of that. I'd submitted to the board my recommendation with, with my notes as it relates to this. And I think every one of the board members has seen that, so.
A good summary, very good summary.
And so my, my recommendation, and it's based on the existing ordinance and concerns on precedents and perceptions, that my recommendation, again, from an administrative standpoint, would stand at not moving forward granting the grant, approving the grant.
However, the board can approve this, and if anything has to be done to our village code, that could be modified in the future as well.
If we, if the board chose to authorize any amount of money, whether it's 10,000 or less, it would require, in my opinion, and Vic's, Vic's here to speak to it, our code and process require that the money does not go towards operating expense. So we would have to turn around and.
This is fine.
We would have to amend the existing ordinance before granting, before awarding the money, or issuing the money. I guess that's the best way to say it.
Along, too.
Bill?
Yeah, still hear you.
We've lost, we've lost your room?
Yeah, we know, we know. We're gonna try to reconnect. Let me do one of these. I don't think I should wait any longer. Let me reconnect to the Wi-Fi? Maybe somebody bumped me? You don't think I should, Denise, do you think I should re-log in?
Um, I let it spin for a minute, see if it pops back up.
There you go.
All right, I think I lost, I think you probably have my administrative privileges, but that's okay, so. All right, are we back? Can we?
I'm, I'm fine listening.
Video is fine, video is still lacking.
Oh, this is weird. All right, now it seems like we're paying too much to Zoom.
For your information, Vic and Bobby, we can see the Hollywood Squares, but it's black where you are, and then here you are.
So we shouldn't make any funny faces, is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, it may, it may pop on at an inopportune time.
It's now showing Bobby is the host.
I could do puppets.
Yeah.
Hold on a second, let me, I'm gonna stop.
We are recording.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we've got the audio.
Yeah, I can't.
So, look on schedule?
Look on schedule? Over here, yeah.
Oh, sorry, not the schedule.
No, go into meetings at the top.
Well, that's where I was, okay, meetings, yeah, start.
There you go. You've got even an MCF, you're kind of. This is the way that accessible.
Oh, you gotta be kidding me. Oh, it's gonna be an easy meeting.
That would be interesting, too, P is both sides. One hand went up, but it's sort of on both sides. That's where this one got kicked out, too, and it's not letting me get back in.
The internet's up, so it's gotta be Zoom issue.
It's gotta be Zoom.
It says connected, perfectly fine, but it says it can't reach the. I'm having difficulty.
Come on.
Yeah, I can't. I'm trying to go to the longgroveil.com website, it won't let me, so.
Can you use your hotspot any time?
I mean, we're Long Grove Gas, right, so.
I'm connected.
All right, well, this is working out very well.
Do we need to reboot the modem? Not the router, but the modem. If we're getting Wi-Fi but no internet, it could be a modem issue.
Is anyone connecting to the internet?
I'm on the internet.
I'm not.
I'm not.
And if we try to.
It's weird, it says, I mean, it says I'm connected, but I can't get.
You're not connected, no.
There's no throughput.
Right.
Unable to connect.
I've seen other problems.
Okay.
So the internet went down.
Well, for purposes of the Open Meetings Act, the video is not required. You have more than a majority of the board in person. So, you know, I mean, although we may have a little bit of a limitation with the video, we can continue as we are.
Okay, well, let's continue. Bobby, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with, without the video. Oh, there you are.
I guess the threat of going forward was enough.
Don't they say the same thing about like finding your late in pregnancy? When you stop trying, that's what happens.
Okay, so we can, everything's working, you can hear us all fine, and they'll see us, too. Oh, my gosh. All right, so the, so the.
If the board chooses to award anything in regards to the community grant, there will have to be an amendment made to the ordinance, which would allow us to, which would allow the village to issue money without a requirement of it not going to operating expense, because a good portion of what is being used is for operating expense.
I, I have some thoughts, if you're interested.
Please, yes, go.
I just, I think the original, well, I know, not think, I know the original grant purpose was really for community building and to vary it out from what originally was for the money always going to one single organization. So I think, however the ordinance is written, I think we need to make sure that that's the spirit of what we're trying to do here, which is create opportunities for community building, create opportunities for inviting, you know, hopefully a continuously turning group of people raising their hand saying, "Hey, I have an idea for community building." I do think this event, so to speak, really fits that. I think it fits well for the village of Long Grove. I am not, I'm sensitive to, but not totally persuaded when I think that one business is complaining that another business is advantaged. I, I appreciate that, I understand that, I also think that that will always be the case. You know, Dalton is preferred over Long Grove Commons over other areas. This is the heart and soul of that. I do know, I'm disappointed because I think part of the whole idea of giving kind of a do-over on this was to encourage more opportunity for actually collaborating with more, for our parts of the village, and I'm not seeing that. So I'll end, you know, I'm still in favor of this. I may be a minority. I'm not in favor of $10,000. I do think it fits the spirit, and so I'd be willing to do that. I am, I would really want to make sure, though, that there are, even if this is benefiting, you know, one business more than others, that there is more of this collaboration before we proceed it. That's, that's my view.
Anybody else? Bobby, you wanna make a comment, or?
I, I wanted to ask, Anne, did she put a number? Did she say a number that she was comfortable with?
Oh, she did.
What was it?
I, I did not say one. I'd probably be comfortable at half. But that, that, again, I, that's one person.
Okay, because in, in spirit, I, I wanna go forward, but I, I didn't see anything specifically about a parade. Now, maybe I missed it.
Now, the parade, the parade issue, as soon as the meeting concluded, the next day I received a, a call and a contact that there was not going to be a parade, that the HDL GPA was not planning on doing a collaborative. There was no discussion, I guess, regarding a parade or moving a parade forward. The effort to put a parade together with closing down the streets probably, and, and I appreciate the, I appreciate the consideration on it, would have taken some time back. I mean, you have to get Lake County involved with it, and there's just a number of things. I don't know with the time between now and July 4th, not saying it can't be done, but I'm not sure how likely it would be done. And again, it's.
Steven, send the marching band, they don't meet during the summer.
Well, Jeff Johnson's been talking to them already.
Oh, interesting.
So that, Bobby, or Trustee O'Reilly, to your. To your point, I know you can still probably hear on the phone, it's that there is nothing confirmed in regards to a parade.
Okay, okay. That, that to me was an important aspect, and that's probably the primary reason I, I made the motion to reconsider, was that I had hoped that there would be more information about community activities being part of this. And, and I guess not.
Bobby, is parade like a, a hard and fast for you, or is some other version of community? Bobby, is parade, like, a, a, a hard and fast for you, or is some other version of community symbolic?
It's symbolic. It's symbolic. It's an activity. You, I could, I could substitute other activities. I could have, you know, dogs marching, or children in wagons, and, you know, anything that, that, that has the community active.
Um, other thoughts?
I, I was a big fan of the parade idea. I think that is what community building, I suggest, when I grew up, we had a doll and pet parade where parents brought their kids, and they put, you know, streamers on their bicycles and cars on their wheels, and they put their dolls in wagons, and, you know, everyone just came together and enjoyed it, kind of a community, so that was... I did like, I, I went to the concert last year, I enjoyed myself. I just would have liked, I do feel that the, um, there is the preference, and I, um, I wanna support all businesses, and I, I've had two business owners come up to me and, and have given me a hard time about it, um, but I, so I, I would like to try and spread this to the whole community and to just help businesses.
Just out of curiosity, I'm satisfied with Monday. Of the business owners that came up to you, are any of them open on Monday? Because right, right now... The, the reason why I ask is because we're the only business opener Monday, and I'm a July 4th, so, that's why I'm asking.
Well, and that's a valid point. I think that we have this community, this last year, and, or, there's the thing that I was trying to, um, pull together for the downtown community, and we knew that we were gonna bring people in, and they didn't open their doors for that, so I...
You know, personally, when I hear all these comments, I think the, basically, the opinions of other businesses should be weighted by the number of hours that they're actually open in the week. Um, I know that Enzo, La Chia's, and Buffalo Creek Grill are the two businesses that are open the most every single week. We're the ones that also employ the most employees, uh, of all the businesses downtown, and we're also the attractions for bringing all the people to downtown. So, when someone complains like that, that's great, but if they don't open their doors, I'm not sorry for them. Like, sorry, you do need to actually step up your game to actually be a business.
Um, other thoughts?
Well, all of this, not with family, doesn't change the fact that this could be construed as an event sponsorship. Doesn't change the fact that we're budgeting 17% of the organization, a countywide organization. 17% of the funding from a village that does not collect property tax.
Yeah, well, it's a countywide organization that is trying to make money.
And I don't see how anything has changed since two meetings ago, when we voted unanimously to deny the grant. I don't see any changes since then. The idea of a parade was thrown out there, that made everybody gears perk up. Okay, let's reconsider. Oops, sorry, it's no parade. So what has changed between today and four weeks ago? Nothing.
Josh, go ahead, yes.
Sure. All that, and that Lake County Symphony Orchestra did not withhold it to Buffalo Creek Grill at all. We would love to have the event still in Long Grove proper. That's why the grant was brought to the board. There are any other locations suitable for this event on July 4th.
Well, that's the rub. That's the rub. You, you make a good point with the setup, rain or shine, right?
Facilities and...
You know, if it gets, there's, there's, is there a rain date if it gets rained out? I mean, you know, we didn't have a problem last year, obviously. Um, but some of the, the logistics are difficult. I, I, you know, the perception that we are, we are further in your business as opposed to spreading the wealth, so to speak. Um, the grant that we set up, I agree with Anne, it was, it's, it's a community building sort of thing. And, and I, and there was a nice crowd there last year. It was, it was very nice. It was very well done. We got lucky with the weather and so on and so forth. Well, a lot of the holidays think around here, right, sometimes. Um, I, I would, I, we don't have another gathering place, really. You know, maybe towners, where are people gonna park, and who's gonna set up the stage, and who's gonna protect the band?
Well, towners, while you know, while the historic downtown Long Grove Business Association is putting anything, anything for your festivals.
I understand. I understand. Um, you know, nobody sits a cavern, but that's not gonna work, so, you know. I looked at a map and thought, where else could we do this, you know, and it...
You can do it in the outlaw to the north.
But remember, the concert can still go forward.
Yeah, but how's your perception?
It depends on stadium. What do you mean, I can check it? Nobody's saying you can't have a concert.
No, absolutely.
It can be like any other concert, sell tickets.
Let me, let me ask, can I ask a question? So, let me ask you this. Can you, if, if you, the village gave you $5,000, can you do it for free?
As for the orchestra, the orchestra will still have Monday?
I was talking.
You were talking?
I was not finished.
Oh, I'm...
Oh, you weren't finished, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rita.
Is there, is there a possibility of sponsorship that could be, um, given by, by Sunset Foods, by PNC Bank, by, you, you, who, whoever? To get to the... It's, from the facts that we have here, and, and the perception, and, and the, the time stuff, not the time stuff, but to change the ordinance, we never have been enough time to tie these people down. So, my, my thinking is, I enjoyed it. I'd like to see more of it. I'd like to see it be a community building, kind of, of, um, like our Leet tonight is, you know, recreation days, whatever they call them. Um, the, the rub is, the rub is, it would be very difficult to not, um, ill-advised for us to write a check for the whole thing, a second time.
I don't understand, though. You guys used to write a check every year for the emergency council?
Yeah.
You had no control, and that was in towners' brain every year, in front of the village chairman, making sure it was complaining about this. So, and yet, you haven't seen it as biased for five years, sitting out there? Explain, explain to me how that's not biased.
Oh, only be, well, only because it, it was kind of in the town center, and, and people roamed in and out, it was no big deal. And it was every Sunday, you know, it's like, it was like a little... You had your revenue, sort of thing, um, and...
And, and how much were you writing for a check for each year for that?
$3,000. I think it was three, wasn't it?
Per counter? Or because they did four per year?
No, we, we were into five figures with at least, at least one of my years. At least one of the years I was here, it was probably $115.
Yes.
At least one of the years I was here.
It was the time, it came back a little earlier than expected, so it hadn't been the whole full year yet, and I think that, I think you're right. Did they keep that kind of a five at that point, or something? But, but the point is, it was four different weekends. Anybody could come, rain or shine, you know, and I, I used to cringe 'cause we sold holding goodies, and I thought, all you need is, all you need is a trip up on that one, right? Um, and, and the, and, and it fulfilled the intent of the grant. So, I, I'm, I'm all for, if, if it's, if it could be done in a timely manner, I'm all for a dollars towards the event. It would be hard to, for me, it would be very hard to justify, given this information, and so on and so forth, to, to go the whole ten. But I would be, I would be more than happy to help find sponsors.
Help them to write it out, if that's what the board's... I have a question of this, what do we want? Okay, right, I was just sitting there saying, we're here with this ordinance, and I, I want something that's more community building. I like this event. I think it fits a lot of that, but I think it needs to reach out more proactively. But the ordinance seems to be sticking more like, what do we want, do we aspire to? Do we want to have the best sponsor of this? Do we wanna be the sponsor of anything? And, and I'm asking that openly open, I'm not advocating one way or another, but I just, I hate to see us sit there and say, well, quantity is better than quality, and it just, and it fits, 'cause I don't think that's the way you actually think, Rita. I think you actually think in terms of quality.
Right. I, I, I would, ideally, I guess I would like to be, I would like the village to be a co-sponsor. Ideally, I would like to see it over near Enzo and La Chia's, over, at, at, at that parking lot, it's just a little more, it doesn't benefit anybody.
Fountain Square?
Yeah, fountain that we have. Well, it's, it's that old area. But, but I, I understand. I hear, I, I, I hear you.
That, that raises your thoughts, because...
I hear you.
And, and you board members...
I understand.
Actually have to hire a team, correct, to go do this.
No, we would just be a sponsor. All that's, um...
Who's gonna handle all the logistics, because that is, we handle all the logistics because it's on the front. If it's not on property...
Right.
Then we wouldn't handle all these logistics.
Property insurance.
And...
This isn't?
For events, if you had to...
Your, your parking lot, good luck.
Hire your parking lot?
Parking lots are insured.
Yeah.
For events?
For events.
For events.
They have to, couldn't have it, otherwise.
Somebody, somebody does the Craft Beer Fest, and they're outside the perimeter of that Craft Beer Fest, where you guys submit your certificate of insurance, and they take a spill. I mean, the village, village has insurance.
I mean, we can't go to the fire department, 'cause they need the driveway, obviously, so it, it's, it's become a bit of a quandary. Um, I don't think I have any more.
I mean, we have no problem with it, with it, without the village. And even if the village wanted to, as a partial, there'd still be the charge for it unless we did find other sponsors. At this point, like you said, it's a little late in the game to find more sponsors, so, you know, and...
Speaking for the Lake County Symphony, is there a need for a grant proposal revision, if it would be a partial sponsorship?
No, I think so. No, I think we can...
Could, could I ask a question?
Please, go ahead, Bobby.
Of, of Mike, and, and that is, how many people came last July 4th?
Somewhere between five and 700.
I, I asked them for that last year, Bobby, and sent out kind of a write-up on it.
Without including children?
I used whatever number you read.
I, I, I didn't hear a number.
720.
700.
Okay, okay. I, I think we've beaten this horse to death, and now we're dragging it out around the barn. Um, either, either we want this or we don't. I want it. I want it because it brings people who maybe ordinarily do not come in to the town. And, and, um, I, I, I think that this is a, um, it, it has potential in the future to be even better, because then we could plan a dam parade, um, along with it, but I, I'm in favor of, of doing this. I think it's good for the town, and, and, and I, I'd like us to proceed.
Alright, so are you making a motion?
Yes.
Uh, for the full amount?
7,500.
Okay, so we have a motion? Go ahead, Vic.
Uh, two points. One, uh, there was some discussion in the materials about the admission price, uh, and the representation, or at least what appeared to be representation, that the admission price would be reduced if the grant were granted. So I don't know if we wanna make a condition. Second, as to the question that Kent was about to ask, um, this motion can be contingent on, uh, the, uh, presentation and approval of an amendment to the code provisions regarding the grant program, so at least we know we're going forward, and then it's just a matter of wrapping it up at the next meeting.
Okay, conditional on a reduction in price, and, and even a consideration that if you're from Long Grove, you get in free. And, and then, and then we, we have to clean up the ordinance.
Okay, so that was, you good with that, this?
I am good with that. I would even, not related to this motion, Bobby. I, I think we, we as trustees, or as villagers, could also, like, use it as a marketing opportunity or communications outreach. We're looking for...
I, I, I can't hear you, Anne.
I, I, it, it, it's not your main to this motion. I'll, I'll cover it later.
Okay.
So we have a live motion, um, on the table here. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Hi.
Trustee Micho?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
I'm not good at 75. I'm good at five. Where, you know, where the 7,500 comes from, it's, let's just, you know, what about 9,500? What about, what's the deal? You know, we have a grant that's a $30,000 grant, so are there tickets gonna be sold? If so, how much?
Not 30, 30,000's what the budget is.
30's the budget.
Right.
Doesn't match for any individual grant.
But we, but we said that, we said that this is not, this is not the spirit of that grant. So we're, we're doing something special, we're changing an ordinance. I'm just real confused here. It's like, you know, it's like...
We're...
Rita, Rita, quite honestly, I think it is in the spirit of, of how we started this grant. I think the technicalities are, are muddying the waters, but, but I think it is with, within the spirit. At least that's what I recall the, the, the 30,000 was for.
Yeah, I remember, and I'd like to see more people. I, I'd love to have choices. You know, I'd love to have five people asking for things. Have we ever seen that yet?
We will.
Good.
Okay, so, live motion, we're doing the roll call right now. Uh, keep going.
Trustee O'Connor?
Okay.
Trustee Tanucci?
No.
Alright, so I think that's four yeses and one no, so motion carried. Thank you. Hopefully, we can make that work.
So, so to, just for processes, um, we will turn around and, um, approve the grant, give notification and approval of the grant in the amount of $7,500. We'll amend the ordinance, bring it before the board at the next village board meeting. If that ordinance is amended, which obviously, if, I mean, if the ordinance is approved as amended, which, based on the vote here, we would anticipate it would be, then we'll issue a check in the amount of $7,500. Um, I, I would recommend, though, to the board that if we are going to have an offset in expense, as Trustee O'Reilly pointed out, and the other trustees, in reduction in ticket price, that that, so we at least know what it's gonna be.
Proportionate?
Well, just so we know what it's gonna be.
Well, I mean, if I ask, it'd be, you know, either free to Long Grove residents, or free to everyone, and work with the city.
$7,500 budget for the grant, what would the board suggest is a new ticket price for the event?
Well, proportionally, I would think it would be $5, or free to Long Grove residents and not $3. You're free to go.
And how would that be proven?
Yeah, how does, and how do you, how do they know they're gonna hit their nuts? $5 to $5.
$5 to, let's just say. Greg, thank you for all the work on it.
Thank you.
You know, five, what, 2,500, because by the way, you guys sell 500 tickets.
Or the alternative is somebody could find a sponsor.
Work on that.
Well, I mean...
You got Sunset Foods, you got the bank, you got, you know, Chase.
I mean, so, hey, we, we're, we're passing this, um, figure out how we make it work, right?
Yeah.
Better than the sheriff's ticket guy, that's all I'm gonna say.
Are there any follow-up items, any work, sure, that the board would...
Well, I mean, can, can they make it work for $7,500?
I, uh, we'll have a board meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00.
Yep, that would be great.
Just, uh, give me a call when it's done, Josh, on, on Thursday, and, or Wednesday, yeah, Thursday, and then we'll stop.
Yep.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Alright. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is consideration approval of the, uh, HDL GBA special event application for Strawberry Fest downtown Long Grove, June 24th through 26th, 2022. Any questions? Okay, move by Trustee Tanucci.
Trustee by Trustee.
Micho, roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci? Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, now we have, the next item on the agenda is consideration approval of special event application for a private party. Seth Payne Elementary School PTO at Brothers Field on May 14th. Now, I think there was one item we were missing, which was the insurance documents. They have been provided, right?
We received it today.
What is the, why, why are we seeing this?
Because it, it, this would have been part of the Brothers Field plan as they were moving forward, but, um, since that is going through the PDDBA process, what we had discussed and what trustee O'Reilly asked was how do we not inhibit them from continuing to move some of these forwards to do it on a special event, on a case by case.
Okay. And, uh, you've been asked if these in front of the board versus them having a private party on their private property is noise or?
Size, outside, music.
Size, outside, music, yeah. Okay, thank you.
No, we, we just approved Strawberry Fest. So, now we're doing the special events application for the private party at Brothers Field.
I lost my connection, so I had to.
I think we all are. There's no internet, so.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
So, we'll.
Okay, so it was moved by trustee Chris Meyer, seconded by trustee Micho. Roll call, please.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Moving right along, uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, consideration of ratification approval of a bonus, seventy-five, seventy-five hundred dollar bonus for our village manager, Jackson. Okay, moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee Chris Meyer. Roll call, please.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now it's time for, um, the village president and trustee reports. Wait, skip anything?
Can I ask a question, a real quick question?
Sure.
On the, um, liquor license, does it make any difference that it's LG, LGB CP, which is not even?
I have that, I have that at events ago. The same question.
Why is it, it's CLGBA now, right?
Yeah, it, the liquor license is valid. We've checked with the state to make sure that it, yeah. I have, I asked the same question because.
I have that at events ago.
Yeah, we, we've had the Long Grove Business Association and then Historic Long Grove, yeah. And so, yeah, it's legitimate license.
When, when, when it says May on, on the, the license, is that the end of May? That it expires?
License, uh, there, there's two licenses that they have. There's the festival of something, festival of.
Festival of.
You've got one for strawberry, chocolate, and.
There's one for victory and.
One for victory.
Apple.
One for all.
Justice.
You guys got your answers to your questions?
I didn't.
One, one liquor, oh, the May, the expiration of the May on the liquor license.
And it runs multiple.
So, the liquor license actually, because of the way it's been applied for, there's, there are three dates, or basically.
Three separate dates for.
And so, it begins and expires, begins and expires, and begins and expires. And beginning on Friday of each festival and, and closing at six o'clock for each festival.
That's when you send the letter in.
Yeah, okay. So, Bobby, does that answer your question?
I can't agree you. Just.
The licenses, the license runs concurrent with these particular events.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so we're good?
Yep.
Okay, we're moving right along. So, the village president and trustee reports. My only report is that, um, we do have an HOA president's meeting next Monday, uh, May 16th at the Woodfire Tavern. Um, the agenda is going to follow, it'll be in person, obviously, because at the Woodfire Tavern, it'll follow the same format, um, with, you know, me doing the, the village update. And, uh, then we're going to have Jeanette Berger come and speak to conservancy best practices. Uh, and then Jeff Perry talking about roads, best practices for roads. So, uh, any questions on that?
Will that be zoomed in or recorded?
I don't think we're going to record it. It'll be, um.
It'll be in person, yeah.
I, I love the, the content that comes through that. It, it just seems like it's almost like a state of the village that would be applicable to more than just HOA presidents because not every neighborhood has an HOA. So, if there's any way to be able to expand the reach, I'd be really in favor of that or.
Okay. Yeah, we can, well, we can use the deck and do it in another format too because it, you'll have a nice summary.
Exactly. I know it's good content.
Like we did with the budget, like you did with the budget.
Like budget or something.
Okay, we can figure out, maybe we can record it or something.
Especially the conservancy information because there are people that have, when we're outdoor knocking, you know, can, can you tell me about, you know, these conservancy?
We get inquiries on a regular basis on it as well, yep.
All right, well, we can figure that out.
And they, yeah, if it's recorded, then we could even splice it out, so here's topic A.
Oh, we can.
That's nice.
We can give it a shot to try to record it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See how that works?
Hopefully not, not tonight.
Working great tonight. All right, that's the end of my report. Um, and we'll just keep moving along. Uh, trustee Barowski is not here. Uh, trustee Chris Meyer?
Um, nothing we're going to be talking about investments in executive session later. That's good.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Micho?
No report unless you have anything about.
No. Sitting tight right now. We'll, we'll get there. Um, trustee O'Connor?
No report.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Tanucci?
I actually have one. So, um, I asked Greg and Margarita to look at residential building permits for smaller jobs, things like we would replace air conditioning services, water heaters, smaller residential, things like that. See what we can do to reduce the building permit cost to our residents. And, um, they are looking at that and we're expecting a report back in the next meeting. Is that right, Craig?
Yes.
So, the goal is to reduce the cost for those simple residential type projects. Not new homes, not complex construction projects, but the, the simple, quick term. It's the first step.
Is the guiding price supposed to be breakeven or just, or just lower?
Uh, breakeven is the goal. Then they'll be in the analysis of what that does to our budget and to our funding.
Just curious on what, is that what they're expecting from our?
What were the items against the HD and the?
It's not an argument, it's because the residential thing, air conditioning, water heater, perhaps driveway, um.
Ruth.
Anything else?
Ruth.
Thank you.
Ruth.
Yeah, Ruth.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's really worth looking into. You know, I, I think people feel like they're governing them to death and protecting them from themselves and making all this money and that's the point, you know.
But, but on the other hand, I shouldn't be carrying the freight for somebody else. In other words, in other words, our permits should be paying for the process.
Well, for sure.
Well, they're more than paying for it now.
That was my question, Bobby. I don't know if you heard. I asked the, the goal.
So, there is a potential decrease in revenue, but we would charge enough to cover our costs.
Yeah.
In other words, breakeven on these simple permits.
And, and actually, that's.
That's factor.
You know, and that, that really kind of comes into the, if my house falls out, my neighbors are affected by it, so, you know. In other words, there's a good reason for it. It's just.
There's a good reason to have a permit.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
But it's a good exercise, yeah.
There is a hope that if the cost of the permit goes down, we may have better compliance.
Thank you for understanding why.
Right, and understand that it has its own. More to come in a minute.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Uh, managers, Mark?
Uh, one, just one item I want to point out that work is, or two items. Conwell Edison's expanded their tree trimming for another two weeks. Um, overall, it's been going pretty well. We had a couple minor incidents that we're addressing now with the, uh, with the contractor who's, who's doing that. The second is that the board approved prior to my arrival a, um, a agreement with the Lake County Forest Preserve District and Country Club of States for screening along the Buffalo Creek Park. That has begun.
Buffalo Creek Forest Reserve?
Yeah.
On Checker.
Yeah, so I went over and looked today. I received, uh, communication from Lake County Forest Preserve District. I went over there and they started planting on the block east of Lincoln off of Checker. So, you can see them starting to do the planting there. And all the, I went out and walked where the planting was supposed to take place about two, three weeks ago, just to make sure it coincided with the drawings that were presented to the board and, and we're pretty well set. Things are going pretty smooth. They anticipate the end of May, first week in June, for it to be complete.
That means all the rain will stop.
Exactly. Meaning after they finish?
So, they need to, well, they got a contract, they have to water, so.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you for that report. Um, approval of the April 2022 bill's list. Okay, moved by trustee Chris Meyer, seconded by trustee Micho. Roll call, please.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. The, uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the board meeting minutes from the April 26th, 2022 meeting. Any comments?
So, I don't know what was actually said with regard to the Blue Star Memorial, but it could very well be transcribed accidentally with that. But it says it could be installed, if they're in the, if they're going to be dedicated.
Okay.
Not installed.
I think somebody just stay, stay installed because I was wondering too, but I can change that.
You okay with that change?
I didn't get a chance to read it, now I can't, so I'll be.
Any other comments? Make a motion to approve?
Okay, I'll make that.
As amended, yeah. Who might make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Tanucci.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Chris.
Trustee Micho?
Chris.
And trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Do you need my vote?
Three, two.
Three, two? Nope, that's yours, okay. Motion carried. Uh, do we need, there's, so, if there's, the executive session meeting minutes were distributed before the meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look at them?
I suppose that's one of the.
We got those in September.
Right, my apology, um, the, the village clerk got those to me shortly after the meeting. I just forgot to put them in the folder.
Do you want to skip it and do it the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll skip it. Everyone good with that?
Yeah, I read them.
Oh, you're fine with them? Uh, but you.
I didn't read them, didn't I?
Okay, so you didn't, you weren't there.
I wasn't there, so.
I read it, it was fine with me.
So, do we have enough?
You see them?
Bobby, you okay with?
I didn't read them.
Okay, so then we're not going to, we're going to kick the can. If everyone's okay with that, all right? Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, moving to, um, any other business? If not, um, I was looking for motions to the executive session to discuss, um, is it acquisition and distribution of property and investments both, Vic? Or just investments? You're muted though, so it might help if you unmute.
That does help. Uh, just the investments is what we are looking for.
So moved.
Okay, just for, okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. All right, I am going to attempt to put us into, uh, a breakout room. Yeah, that's what's working.
Should they read prayers?
I should have gone to church on Sunday. Don't tell anyone. Don't tell anyone.
So, we, get to figure out what happened with the internet.
Bill, you are muted. Bill, you're muted.
Okay, that worked. Okay, so we're all here. Uh, motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Okay, meeting adjourned. All right, everyone.
And, and would you remind Ann, she was going to tell me something that she was going to say earlier.
Oh, yes. Oh, it, what it has to do with, uh, Fourth of July, I think we should be out there proactively talking about village communications at this event that we just allocated community grant money to.
Oh. Okay.
And I'll raise, I'll raise my hand.
Okay.
How do you force that?